Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'll be choosing the board's open session. Mr. Coleman?
Present.
Mr. Goodman?
Uh huh.
Mr. Payne?
President.
Mr. O.
President.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. James Higginson?
Yeah.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
The seating unable to join us is Mr. Benezu, Mr. Noli, and Mr. Bellis. Presentation. Mr. Kennedy, can you introduce your, your, uh, comments?
Good afternoon. So tonight we have a presentation from Tyler Chamis. He's from Care Solace. It's a company that this district recently established a partnership with, which is mostly has this problem as a mental health concierge service. With, uh, in doing our research and getting feedback from families and staff members, one of the things that we've noticed is connecting our families with mental health services has been challenging at times. So this service that we partnered with, where they, they kind of bridge the gap between community and the actual service that students and the staff and the families need to be delivered. So I know Tyler's gonna cover most of it in this presentation. So, uh, welcome, Mr. Chamis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. How's the audio? Can everyone hear me okay? Looks like the screen froze, but I would, if I could get the ability to share my screen, please, that would be helpful. Then I can jump into the presentation. There we go. Thank you for that. All right. So we just recently partnered up with your district and we're really excited about the partnership. We're grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve your community. My name is Tyler Chamis. I'll be the primary point of contact from Care Solace. Today I'm just stepped through a few slides to formally explain who Care Solace is and how we'll be supporting your community. I'll show you the tools that are available and I'll be available to answer questions as well. So Care Solace, we are a mental health care coordination service on a mission to calm the chaos of the mental health care system and break down any barrier that might prevent someone from getting connected to care. Right now, we're serving over 4,000 school sites across the United States, mostly K through 12, but some higher education as well. And over 3 million students have access to our service. But when we partner with an institution like Hackensack, the service is not only available to the students, it's also available to their families. It's available to the staff and the staff families as well. So universal access throughout the schools, which means that over 12 million students and people have access to our service currently. Some people from the organization to know, I am the primary point of contact. There's my email. We have a whole team that we're wrapping around you. Miriam Stevenson is our executive director of community engagement. She has over 17 years' experience in education and is a great thought partner when it comes to implementation and driving stakeholder engagement. Ashley McDevitt works directly with your community providers. So she meets with those providers to help facilitate the, the relationships and ensures that the referral process is as seamless as possible. Kelly Van Cleve is our licensed clinical social worker and the executive director of our care coordination team. I'll talk about that team in more detail here lately, recently, but that's a great partner when it comes to triaging difficult student situations or navigating different pathways of care in your community. The reason why we're doing what we're doing is because, as many of you know, navigating the mental health care system on your own can be a little bit chaotic. And these are just some of the challenges that can get in the way of someone who needs help, getting the help that they deserve, whether it's the social stigma of reaching out for help, long wait times, navigating insurance language barriers. We've put a system in place to hold your hand through this process, to break down those barriers on your behalf and calm the chaos of the mental health care system. We're able to do that through our three pathways of care coordination. All roads lead to the care companions here in the middle. They are the heart and soul of what we do. And think of the care companions as the workhorse for your community because they're the ones who wait on hold, check availability, navigate insurance, make sure that providers specialize in the specific needs of the family. They are experts at navigating the mental health care system and handholding families through that appointment setting process. So you can reach out to the care companions directly via phone, email, video chat, but they can also be contacted through these two other pathways of care coordination. There's Care Loop on the left-hand side, which is an internal dashboard. Just earlier today, I trained the school-based mental health team on how to use Care Loop, and this allows them to refer students and students' families directly to Care Solace. A care companion reaches out to that family to coordinate care for them, but through this dashboard, we keep the team in the loop along the way. So they'll get live updates on the status of the case. You're able to track it so that they can help them out and triage that situation. We're also providing very valuable data on how many people are reaching out, how many of those people are getting connected, breaking down the demographics, breaking down the reasons why they're reaching out for help, and then connecting and showing who they're getting connected to as well. Now, the third pathway of care coordination is Care Match. Hackensack has their own proprietary link, which I'd like to show you tonight, and this allows all stakeholders, including you all and your families, to anonymously and confidentially get matched up with local providers that meet your specific needs for both mental health and substance use, the ability to do that completely anonymously and confidentially from the comfort of your home. So with that being said, I'm gonna switch my screen share and pull that up so you can see what I'm talking about. All right. So this website is caresolace.com/hackensack. And this link is live. It's ready to be used, ready to be distributed. We've put together some letters and flyers and marketing materials for the district to distribute, but we wanted to make sure to have all these meetings so that you're all in the loop first. Now, this is available to all stakeholders, like I mentioned. It does not require a login. It does not ask any personal information. It is completely anonymous, completely confidential, and it's super user-friendly, very easy to navigate. So you just start by selecting whatever you're struggling with, whether it's on the mental health side or if it's on the substance use side. Then we'll just ask a short series of questions regarding the severity, your demographic, your insurance, if you do have insurance, your proximity. And based on your answers, we will generate a list of local providers that meet your specific needs. Now, you can reach out to those providers on your own if you wish to do so, or you can leverage a care companion at no cost to you and your family. And that's really what we encourage. That's where we can add so much value. So if you go up here to book appointment, you will see the email, phone number, and video chat directly to that team, and they can be contacted anytime. So if you choose to reach out to them, they will pull the list of providers that you're matched up with and start to call them on your behalf to vet them further and ultimately to help you schedule that appointment. Not only that, but then they'll follow up to make sure that it's a good fit as well. This website can be translated to all of these languages here in the top right corner, and we do have the National Suicide Prevention Hotline here in case of a crisis. I'll just briefly show you that internal tool so you can see what your, your team members have access to. This is your school-based mental health support team. We'll have a dashboard similar to this. So this is a sample, but say Tyler Smith is our hypothetical counselor, and he referred these families. So these are the warm handoffs, and you can see that they're updating in real time. They're in different stages. You can see a summary of the dashboard and how many contacts we've made on behalf of Mr. Smith and on behalf of these 11 families in an effort to coordinate care for them. And that's where the, the data will be housed as well. But that's everything I wanted to share with you all tonight. I wanted to keep it short and sweet, make sure that you had the information and you're familiar with who Care Solace is. I really appreciate all of your time. If there are any questions or if that's appropriate, I'm happy to address them now.
There don't, there doesn't seem to be any questions. Tyler, thank you so much for your presentation. Tyler, thank you so much for finding Care Solace and bringing it to our business. So thank you, guys.
Very welcome. Thanks for having me.
The staff recognition program will be during the center report. Let me see, can we, can we invite you all discussing transportation challenges?
So welcome again. I just wanted to take the time out to acknowledge some of the transportation challenges that we've been having as a district since we opened and even during the summer. So one of the main challenges, I guess, is a nationwide thing is this, bus drivers, just in general throughout all of the transportation companies, not only is there a lot of but most of their drivers new, I would say 80% turnover. So most of the bus drivers that we have contacted with are relatively new drivers. Most of the ages are relatively new, which has caused severe delays in pickups and drop off for families. And quality of service, quite honestly, is diminished also. Another layer to that is a lot of closing of streets and things in the city of Hackensack at this time. So when a bus reroute, it's a lot different than when you're in your car and you could just make a left and a quick right and get to a family. And just to be open about some of the challenges, the communication barrier has, has been there between bus company being late and getting that information to our office to reach out to them. Something that happened more recently is they had to combine routes because of the lack of availability to buses. So what we've been working with families are, or you might get a call now that the pickup time is 30 minutes prior to, for the drop-off times, the expectation for your child getting home is a little later than what the standard. A lot of these things we've all working on is, is bus drivers get more experienced and more familiar with the city. We've been sending out weekly where the, the street closing are in the city so that bus drivers, they can use their, their weaves or whatever navigation devices, they can plan a little better in the morning. So that seems to be getting something better. We do have a few families still waiting for a route, and as soon as those buses become available, so we'll put them on a route. The last thing is just because we haven't used transportation in so long, families are just having to, to get a comedy to two buses showing up with time, where they're, where they're gonna pick them up, drop off, and things. We just want to make sure we're safe. But the officers constantly working on it to try to make like the lack of bus drivers and their experiences is causing a lot of delays. So I just wanted to, you know, put that out there and acknowledge that we're getting back to families that we get to complaints and handling them, you know, in a common manner. Definitely just here. If you guys have any questions, you can reach out to me directly.
Thank you, Gary. You know, we look. Okay. Have time for my support. So good evening, everyone. First, first and foremost, I hope you all are healthy and safe. Before I begin my report tonight, I would like to ask you all to join me in observing a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of one of our district students this August to a long-standing health-related condition. I'll bring it to the floor. The president? Before I begin, I would like to ask you all to join me in observing a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of one of our district students this August to a long-standing health-related condition. Our thoughts and prayers are with this family during this difficult time. Please stand. Thank you, committee D. This past year and a half has been challenging for all of us, and the beginning of this school year has been no different. Just before our school was about to open for our students, everything heightened. If it wasn't for the hurtling efforts of our custodial and maintenance crew, they may not have been able to open school on time. So tonight, I would like to take a moment and publicly acknowledge and praise the entire Hackensack Public School custodial and maintenance staff led by custodial managers to vet his office for a job well done. Moreover, I would like to acknowledge two staff members in particular. They are Peter Heenan, head facility of Hackensack Middle School, who's staying up all night at the middle school to ensure that the front pump continues to work all night and keep the building from flooding, and Adam Hsu-Fu, head custodial at our part of the building in Hackensack High School, for his leadership and handling the cleanup effort efficiently and effectively with his staff. If you were at the high school the day after the storm, you would have questioned our ability to open the next day. Yet, they didn't. Peter and Adam, if you're here, please come up to discuss your specific, but wanted to use my I will certainly deliver Adam's certificate tomorrow. Okay, moving on, tonight I'm pleased to announce that all Hackensack Public Schools have achieved Sustainable Governance for Schools 2021 certification. And four of those schools are amongst the first to be also recognized as digital school stars. We are being awarded with this recognition due to our commitment to implementing sustainable, environmentally-friendly practices and curriculums. I would like to thank each school-based team to helping us achieve this special recognition. I would also like to publicly thank our technology director, Adrian S. Perro, for taking the bow by the horn with this initiative. His leadership is greatly appreciated. Next month is our joint board meeting with our sending districts. I hope you can join us for this special presentation by our high school administration. Finally, each year from September 15th to October 15th, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to recognize the achievements and contributions of Hispanic Americans to our country, such as Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, astronaut Ellen Ochoa, actress Rita Moreno, athlete Alberta Clemente, and actor, writer, performer, Lin-Manuel Miranda, just to name a few. As a proud Hispanic American, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the great Hispanic Americans who have positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. But tonight, I would also like to thank my parents, who, leaving Cuba in 1957, given me an opportunity to be born in this great country and create my own path. I, for one, do not take their attractive bites of the braggadocio. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Our enrollment is currently 5,320 students, and all HCP and Regent's reports are on bar. That concludes my report.
At this time, I would like, anyone who would like to make public comments or approach the microphone, state your name and your three-minute time hold.
Good evening, everybody. Got a few thoughts. Couldn't have a nice outlet. I was listening to the Honor Pointer meeting on Google, and I had a couple of questions for Mr. Sanchez. I know you're not a ventilation and ventilation specialist, but when I think of COVID and air circulation, I want air exchange, not just pushing air into the room through windows. It has to also be able to leave the room. And we're in a chemical laboratory. Our air exchange has to be great, but otherwise the fumes from the acids that I use would put a lot of us in hospitals. And you don't want to have, if I were to move developing a lot in the classrooms, if there's no exit, you can pump air into a room, but they don't, it doesn't go out. It's not gonna do anything. Okay, I mean, I'm not, I looked at your policies from last year, and it's mainly about air exchange, so ventilation, HEPC, stuff like that there. I just, I'm hoping that you have other people involved. Last month, we even talked about air conditioning because it's too hot for the room. I work in a laboratory again, we can't exit in a lab, and you couldn't afford the cost. So we wear masks. I'm a little over the most students, a lot over the most students. But I wore, I wore masks for over a year, and still occasionally do. But it's 95 outside, it's 95 inside. And we work at about 65 degrees in the winter, so they, they freeze solutions otherwise. So that's the point, I just want to make sure that we're talking about air exchange, not just opening windows that doesn't extend air, less than a brief. Second thing, the word sustainability mentioned in the last meeting. Well, I'm, I'm one sixty feet away from most people, that's bad.
Fair enough, but this is in accordance with the
I'm not gonna, just let me finish. I know, I heard your last
We're on politics, officer. And what's made for your benefit and all the benefits of the other benefits of public, the board's education and the obligation to abide by the executive order of the governor of this year. That executive order requires all individuals who are any public school facilities, like facilities to wear a mask.
Okay.
The board president just respectfully likes to ask you
Okay, no, I'm sorry. I have a question. I apologize, though. I haven't been in school in a while. I'll learn, no problem. I think it's worth something. I call him that. Okay. Sustainability. Now, the one thing that we mentioned, I'm not gonna get into contract or anything else, if the board was involved with all the buildings that's going on in town at the get-go for the pilot money, they just have some more money. They're still giving out pilot money, so get to the table with the city council. They're receiving all the benefits, and we're getting all the kids that may come in, get all these apartments too. So we're talking about 3,500 apartments, probably less than a year from now. It's a given around town, there's a lot of empty apartments, so that may never happen. They're looking at 30 years of no taxes. You're not upfront with the pilot money, which you have, as I say, because I haven't seen anything from the town giving you pilot money. You've lost all that. I mean, who cares getting back in that place? What's the role in that? Couple of things, certificate, immediate input. Now, two meetings ago, you want to move the election to November. You had a Zoom meeting, everybody called in, said no, no, no. The following month, you brought the vote up again, you voted against it. Following me, you brought it up again, and you passed it. Community involvement, said no. Thirty days later, it's okay. Which is not community involvement. That's annoying. You almost gave away your athletic facilities for an easy amount of money, but other things. But we should go back on that. Okay, if you want community involvement, listen. Don't tell what you want to do if the community doesn't want you to go that way. All right. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is here at City of Hackensack. About a couple of months ago, I started going through some of the actual meetings, but there's one that kind of stuck out most to me, and that was the May 17th meeting. And these are some of like the exact, I need clarification, more or less, to say. Some of these meetings were, I guess it was a presentation that was actually done by the Hackensack administration. So one of the things that was said was, although we have a long way to go, so my question is, how long do we have to go and how long will it take? And in that clip, they were talking about diversity and inclusionary within the school system, with the actual teachers getting promoted within our district. So the other question that was said is, I am looking in the mirror at the changes that I need to make. And my question is, what changes do you feel that you need to make in terms of hiring practices? And especially related to hiring qualified minority candidates? Then there was another one that said about reflection and personal commitment. But then I'm asking the question, hiring practices administrated positions specifically qualified African-American candidates. So what are we doing here? Is this a true reflection of what's been said in the March, the May 17th meeting? Or is this just like a show? Because I've heard through others that, you know, people are qualified within our district, but are passed by, I did speak on the last meeting about the old administrative ways. We have to stop cronyism, we have to stop nepotism, all of that needs to stop. The committees need to go away. Now that we do have a human resource manager, I'm qualified, that is qualified, I'm quite sure that he will be looking really deeply into how hiring practices and the hiring of minority teachers, when, men, especially men in the middle school. Leadership is important. And if you're leading from the tail and not the head, it'll all collapse before it's over. So we do have to have better leadership. That is most necessary, to say the least. So I'm hoping that this May 17th, and if you need to go back and kind of review it, I think you should. Because some of you spoke in the presentation of the meeting, because you're looking at me like as I'm saying something wrong. But I'm just saying, you know, you should, you should go back and look at it. Because in that way, you'll, you'll understand where I'm coming from. We do have to have better leadership in our schools. Middle school is important. That's a coming of the age. But the kids, they don't know the difference, so we have to do better.
Good evening. My name is Sorry, can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
I'm here as a parent, of course, in Houston, Hackensack, and also as an educator. From the parental perspective, if I have a child that's going to a classroom, I would love to know that the teacher or teacher that's teaching my child are coming to the classroom with a prayer mind, a prayer head, to be able to teach right my, my child, which I'm sure every single one of you, if you're a parent, you would wonder. Why am I saying that? And now as an educator, I feel like sometimes, and I, I feel a lot of what we hear in the buildings is like, the anxiety is very high. And we can capitalize on money from the sort of whatever that company that we have now, that I just showed before, if we just take our educators much better. Why am I saying that? I understand Mr. Sanchez, who was there earlier, recognizing people for what they're doing with, that is so, that is very good. What we're just asking is to extend a little longer, listen to the educators, ask us questions. Because after all, we don't want to interact with the case. We know our case, we know what they need. So yes, for one example, I'm sure you say, what is this supposed to be about? I'm gonna use one example, perfect example. We've all been on COVID. So if we would pass, pass regular stuff, we said last year, we just called, we did our Zoom, we did our back-to-school through Zoom, and that went perfectly, we didn't see any negativity. So this year, we're just asking a little bit of grit, like, same, we do the same thing. After all, no parent is coming to the building. We're just gonna do virtual things, and we just do that also from home. That would be elective and case, you stress that out as a first of a kind of thing, because we did what we were supposed to do when COVID is. We have virtual links, we go home tired, and then we do what we have to do for the benefit of the case. And I know each and every one of us, we have one common denominator, is to educate the case to the best of our capability. So you do your part, we do our part, together, we will do our, what we need to do for the case. My second thing I'm asking is, when you're about, I don't know, when you guys get together to make a decision, think about something, I'm just asking you to think, put up voice, think, think twice, everything. Just like we are helping you and they're gonna solve a problem, think, don't just go with it. Why am I asking that? We asking you, before you make that decision, ask yourself, what is the objective? What is it that I want to accomplish? So whatever my decision is here, what is gonna be the reaction? So what is it that I want to do? If I, if I don't, you don't remember anything, I'm gonna ask you to remember two things. When you guys make a decision, think, think, why are you making the decision? Who is it going to affect? Who is it gonna be benefit? And if I do something, maybe if I do something now, I let my teachers, say whom did I do? Maybe don't do, perform much better than I did. Maybe those do perform much better than next year. I work in a building where we work with three-year-old, three, four-year-olds. So we really need to have clear minds. My building especially, you see, you see, we have a lot going on there. No matter what we say, people don't pay attention. And as I just mentioned, we work with three, four, five-years-old. Some teachers now are going without lunch. Why? Because they don't have enough access. They don't have enough on lunch aid. And that is not, that's creating definitely a sad atmosphere. People are like, diving to the roof. So you always save lots of money. Forget about that company. Just talk to us. Show us that you care. That's what, listen to us when we talk to you. Just say, what can I do to really make you feel good? Because if we're good, the kids will feel good and the parents will feel good. So why would, why wouldn't you want to invest in us? Invest in our feelings? Forget about that. I don't wanna say anymore mental health thing. I just wanna go home to my husband, my children, say, today I had a good day. My kids did what they have to do. I say, wait, that all, honey, forget it. Give me one hour. I'm not here, I'm not home yet. Start the food, I just want a nap. I don't wanna go home every day. And I'm sure I did that for a lot of teachers. Some of them been teaching twenty-something years, and they just say, I'm tired. This year or the past year was the worst that I ever had from those years that I worked. You don't wanna hear that. A lot of us doing that, don't matter because of the pay, that's no, you know, teachers need to pay that. But we do it for the love of, of our children, for the passion that we have. As I said, I have four boys and they're always here. My younger one's twenty-six. So coming to Barabat, that has something to do with me. I used to start coming to Barabat with, once I knew senior, what, around the table. We don't used to have conversation. We agree to disagree. We act like parents, we act like adults. Another thing I wanna say, H E S, you should be the bridge from the educators and you guys. And now, I feel like H E S and you, I feel like you're on a different continent. Not even a different country, or even different street, different continent. You guys are not communicating anymore. How can we teach our kids how to communicate if we're not open and do it?
Can we just, we have a lot.
Please, just let them just do it. Are you making a decision? Please, think about it. What is your objective for actually putting to a test? And the second, this whole special view to you, because there's a lot going on there, and we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, girl. All right, let's try to get to the three minutes.
No, I know it's not going.
Did it work?
Yeah, it's just flashing.
Superseded, the district superintendent, school board officers, and all the citizens at this meeting this evening. My name is Robert Cole, and I'm a resident of the City of Hackensack. I'm here tonight to express my concern for some of the things that not only did I see, but some of the things that I hear that are going on in our school district. And I just want to implore you, as a school board, as district administration, to uphold the ideals associated with managing a successful school district. It seems to me that we are failing in some strategic areas. And it was with a, it's with a heart of heaviness that I come here this evening to bring to your attention that we need to have more control in the school district. The obvious nepotism and some of the other things that are going on, old shoes should be thrown away. But not if you can still walk in and if they're still useful. But some of what's going on around here is we got friends. I heard coming over here, one said, uh, friends don't let friends drive roads. Well, friends don't let friends teach their children if they're not capable and if they don't have the qualities that need for the job. I heard this young lady, I wasn't even, I'm over here and you're saying to, uh, how we gotta get things together, and that's true. It's obvious that we need to have more control about what's going on. And some of this stuff, guys, is widespread. And how do I know it? Because I sat on this board for some years previously. So I've been looking at some things, and I've been home and looking around. You know, we, we talking Hackensack about homegrown. We always talk about homegrown. Well, you know, in order to have a successful yield in your garden or on your plant, you have to weed out some bad stuff every now and again. Because weeds will bred the roots of your vegetables, and now you don't have a good yard anymore. So we might wanna consider look at that, looking at that. It, it breaks my heart to look at the things that we have to endure and that our teachers and our students are enduring as a result. Please, I beg of you tonight, remove your rose-covered glasses and take a stand for justice. Not just for the teachers, but the teachers and the students. I'm afraid that if we don't, the price we are going to pay one day is gonna be entirely too costly. So I'm asking you tonight, with a heart of genuineness, to get this together. Because we throw out a lot of fun and we, we make things look really beautiful. Guys, we're not doing a good job. And I say we, it's not you, it's we. Because when we go to the election box and we vote for you, then we're just as guilty as you. If you fail, then we all fail. So I'm not gonna have you have me sit down. I'm gonna take my seat right back over there in the corner over there. But I'm, I'm serious about what I'm asking you tonight. Please, 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 let's put our hands to the wheel and let's get this thing straightened out today.
It's flashing. Yeah, sorry.
Um, this one is more behavioral for Hackensack. I'm also a middle school teacher. Um, to the board, I must make you aware of many things that are going on in Hackensack. Because we are short-staffed with teachers, instructional assistants, and administrators, we are all being schooled in various directions, making us less effective in our science. This is causing a major strain on us physically, emotionally, thus lowering the overall morale in our building as educators. If our professional obligation is to help students, we are not really effective this year. Additionally, the continuous miscommunication and sudden changes to schedule is unfair and only making the situation worse. I hope that you are not, I hope that you are not obvious to the fact that overnight scenes is still a real thing. Not only are we concerned about people being in and out of the building, but we are also concerned about the social and emotional support of our children. All of these decisions may seem to take away from the true focus of our mission. And if we're not here for the students, why are we here? So I'm just asking, maybe some of you should come to Hackensack and visit our building from eight-thirty to two-fifty and see how we're feeling. Because like the other educators said, when we get home and we have children, we're worn out. And I can imagine how our administrators feel. If our, if we're educators and teachers are worn out, our administrators are worn out. And I know pillars, we're the best that we can be, and we help our administrators as much as we can. But I can imagine how she feels if we're feeling the same way. So I'm asking, maybe one day come visit and see what we go through from eight-thirty to two-fifty, and then you can understand why we're all coming up here for meetings. Thank you.
My name is Yenkari Ma, and I'm a proud teacher at Fannie Meyer School. I wanted to offer us some acknowledgement and show some appreciation before I share some of my concerns. I want to thank Mrs. Whiting and Dr. Soto for everything they do, especially with all the obstacles I faced and challenges. This brings me to my first concern. Dr. Soto was not being cared with that thing. So this decision has affected everyone involved in a negative way. Even with the overwhelming responsibilities, Dr. Soto has not sticked to these, to make sure that her staff and students get what they need. And what she, when she's not in the building, and Mrs. Whiting has held down the fort. But how much can one individual take before they fall apart physically and mentally? You don't seem to understand how much goes on on a daily basis, on a, on a daily level. And without both administrators in the building at all times, students suffer, teachers are affected, the school as a whole is affected. You tell us that you're supposed to be the student, and your decision to place Dr. Soto in two schools is not what should be supported. I urge you to reconsider and return Dr. Soto to her workplace. Another concern is the professional development, that we have been scheduled for this year. They don't fit the present time. They don't fit our students at this point, and they definitely do not fit the guidelines of this thing that. At this point, they just kind of seem like a waste. Or you could be using that time to be an uplasting, truly planning and focusing on how to help our students to be mentally and environmentally. CDs need to be reconsidered, and starting new programs and curriculums should be planned better and maybe could have waited for just another year. The last concern I want to share with you tonight is the undervalued of the future. We receive emails thanking us for being flexible and good educators, but then we get another email coming through asking us to do more and more and less. The passion that we have, the passion that we have to meet the world a better place for the children, and up here is non-miable. The kids do not misunderstand that. Day in and day out, either he or the board, the pandemic or the insane guidelines. Neither teacher, you are best to help our students grow and work. What I'm asking is for you to stop the sound off that you see us and you hear us, and actually start showing us what you actually believe you do. I challenge all of us in this group, including us personally, to become part of the youth. We are the youth. The youth should include all of us in this thing. I challenge all of us tonight to become part of that. I challenge all of you to accept us as part of the youth. If you really want to make a difference, if you really really want to build a better community, which is what you actually do, and if you really want to inspire our students, if you really want to respect that it's part of a positive working relationship, then you have to start being part of the youth. So that to me, it's us and you. If we make how we us and you for that, I want to create to say that we educate, not I educate. I should have learned that more. So please, let's have an example, right?
Good afternoon, my name is Kajana Pamas. I am here because I have a state graduate at the middle school. Now, I've seen the board at the middle school, but I have never seen you on the third floor. The third floor temperature in a classroom is eighty-five degrees. You like this air, right? Well, I see it's good too. They're hot. They don't function properly with the, with the Dean, so hot. It's, it's immoral. It's an injustice to our children. Our children need you, and you guys have let them down. You have not educated them properly in ninety, in eighty-five degree weather. They can't function. They have, all the floors have new water fountains. The third, the third floor has the old. So now they have to go to the second floor to get their water bottles fixed. What are we doing? Our students are important. There is no, there are no boundaries for our children. There's no constructive feedback from our children for our children. I need you guys to do better for our children. They may not look like you guys, but they are important. They are important. That's all I have to say. Is you guys enjoy the air. How about our students enjoy the air? How about our students are appreciated? How about they can come to school and be safe? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tony Burt. I'm a resident of Hackensack and a proud teacher at Fannie Meyer Soo's School. And I stand before you tonight to probably reiterate some things that I've already said to you in the past. There's a lot of conversation about how we want to develop Hackensack and we want to grow them, but it seems that we're always comparing them to other districts because that's the comment that constantly comes up. Hackensack is a district in and of itself, and I'm not so sure why we need to make it look like other districts instead of fixing us to be the best district that we can be. I'm a little concerned still about this dividing the district into the north and the south. I thought segregation was over. I'm really having an issue with it, that we divided it into the north and south. I don't understand why we have to have that kind of division. What's the purpose? It's 2021, and we divided into north and south. That bothers me. I don't know about you, but it does bother me. I'm a little concerned with the fact that for the last year or so, we've been having professional development by individuals who have no concept of business learning. They don't know anything about teaching virtually. And if you ask them about it in professional development, they said, well, I've never done that before. But we paying them a lot of money to do that. They don't look like our kids, they don't know anything about teaching our population of kids, but they're doing it. While I'm on the subject about doing things for our kids, dividing two assistant principals between four schools has no concern for our kids whatsoever. To take two people, put them in two climates. Every school has its own identity, its own culture. To take one person, make them split themselves between two schools is not fair to them mentally, physically, or emotionally. It may have worked during COVID because some principals had to work with one administrator, but they had less kids in the building, and they really didn't have to deal with all the things that we're dealing with now. And so it doesn't seem like we're concerned about the well-being of our staff and of our administrators individually. It is true, we don't see you in the building. There are some of you I've never seen you in the building. And taking a, you know, strolling through the building every once in a while, smiling is not enough. You gotta do more than smile. You gotta do something for it. Those kids don't even know who you are. They have no idea who you are. They've never been introduced to you, you've never introduced yourself. They have no idea who you are, and some of the staff don't know who you are. And so the reality is, we need to start making decisions for our kids. I don't know about high school, I don't know about middle school. Elementary school needs to administer. It is not fair for them to think that no administrator can be all of the power themselves. No, I'm fault. I have to pour at the board. Please allow me to, to really try time. Allow me to.
When we try, guys.
So if I, remember the phone, can I have the microphone, please? The friends and colleagues.
I'm having a hard time. I can't, I can't hear because it picked the phone. I'm bad, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I just can't hear, I'm sorry.
That, that's fine. But we need to start making decisions that affects our kids. And to take two administrators out, I don't know where that came from or why you thought that was a good idea. All these department buildings are going up, they also have kids. Where you gonna put them?
I've seen Dan Hackensack. Um, I just wanted to take a quick moment and request a message before we go to Abby and let her know that we have thirty-nine members at Drama Club, mostly freshman sophomores, which will be very happy to know that. Um, I wanted to talk about a couple of things first. Is the personnel agenda goes up late, so I had a chance to look at it just a moment ago. I'm quite struck by the number of resignations. I, I would like to think that everyone should be alarmed by the number of resignations. That seems like an odd thing. I did some quick numbers, and since the end of the school year, we've had thirty-four resignations, and we've had forty retirements over the course of the school year. So, um, that should be concerning, I think. And I'm curious, especially now that there is someone new handling HR. I'm wondering if there are exit interviews being done? Are we asking those people what they're doing? I think that would be valuable. I think those insights should be shared with the board. I think that it's fair to get a sense of why people are leaving the district at this time of great uncertainty in our nation and in our city. I also wanted to address back-to-school night just for a moment, and my disappointment that parents weren't invited into our building for back-to-school night, particularly because the parents have been told for about a year that our buildings were safe, that they were comfortable, that they were welcoming. And so I'm a little bit confused that my students' parents aren't able to walk through. that they were comfortable, that they were welcoming, and so I'm a little bit confused that my students' parents aren't able to walk through the hallway, see the vacant lockers in the high school where there should be lockers, see all of the plastic dividers in the classrooms, see how easy it is to see and hear in those classrooms. When you're in the back of the classroom, see how the desks are about two and a half feet away from the desk next to the other kid. I think that would be very instructive. Back to school night is supposed to let the parents walk in their kids' shoes in the building. And to deny them that, I think, is a great injustice actually to our parents, who should know exactly what their kids are experiencing every day. If the high school is safe for eighteen hundred students, it should be safe for their parents. I think that's reasonable. They could do a screener just like we did entering the building today for the Board of Education. Additionally, I just wanted to say, the fact that we could do back to school night virtually for parents, I think just highlights how these meetings, these Board of Education meetings, should continue to be accessible to parents virtually. Be it the phone, email, Zoom. This is technology that we all had to learn. We have a very amazing tech team. They can work this out. So I ask that you reconsider that. I know what the governor's minimum is, but we can do better than the minimum. So we should be making these maximally accessible and not counter-programming back to school nights on that. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear. Thank you.
Hi. Kimberly King, resident of Hackett State, teacher at Hackett State High School. I want to piggyback off of what Mr. Gaines mentioned. He mentioned that there were several resignations and retirees. And that's concerning because as a parent of four children that go to this district, I have personal experience with a daughter who's sitting in a classroom. It is a resource classroom, and she currently is not working with a certified teacher, which is a contradiction to the letter that I received today saying that all of our regular educators are certified. My son is in a classroom where he has, is waiting on his IBS teacher. Now, that's likely due to a late hire. You have to ask yourself, why are we using so many teachers? Why are there so many current vacancies? Why is there a shortage of teachers? Why do we need subs for our subs? Our long-term subs aren't even here. And I think there's a direct correlation between the fact that, I mean, COVID is definitely a reason, and it's key to treat the best. But I also think there's a correlation between the way that we're being reading our expired contracts. I don't think you can hide from that. When I was a student, rent out of college and looking for a place to work, Hackett State was the place that people wanted to be. You wanted to work here. You waited for when somebody would retire, hoping and praying that you were the one children. And now, the vacancies remain open for months. My daughter's teacher position has been open since the spring. It remains open now. We made the tough decision to retain her in second grade. For what? The fact that we made the decision to retain her in second grade?
No, no. It's about the future. It's a friend.
It's been vacant since the spring, but they cannot go with the district. Either people aren't applying, or they go through the whole process, and something stops them from accepting the job. Something turns them away when they go through the entire interview process and they finally sit down to talk business. What could that possibly be? If you go through the entire interview process and you're ready to sit down and talk numbers, what makes somebody turn away? So it would be nice to have teachers, certified teachers, people who are qualified to teach our kids actually in those positions.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blake West Whitey, and I'm the very proud principal of Fannie Meyer Southern School, the academy on the hill, where all of our students are. But I wanted to let you know this evening that not only are our students tired, but our staff members are tired as well. My heart is full. I wasn't going to the beach this evening, but I just could not sit as my teachers came forward to thank us as building leaders and to thank them for being who they are. It has not been easy, but when the going gets tough, the tough get going. And at Fannie Meyer Southern School, and I'm trying, and my college school as well, the teachers have risen to the occasion. When we need help in the lunchroom, they're there. When we need help in the hallway, they're there. When I'm outside pacing around the perimeter of the school, they're there. And I was caught by a very wise woman. Her name is Melvin Borsey, my mother, who always said that when people are kind and when people are good, we need to acknowledge that kindness and that goodness. And I would not be the woman I am, nor the instructional leader I am, if I did not, if I did not come here to say thank you. First of all, to Dr. Soto, who is going above and beyond and trying to manage two buildings. She is at one for one week, one for another week, and Ms. Petrowal is doing the same. These women are amazing. They're giving their heart, their time, working weekends, late, just giving their all. And I want to publicly thank Ms. Dr. Soto and Ms. Petrowal. And then I want to thank Ms. Parkin. Ms. Parkin has been at the school. She shows up, she calls, she visits classrooms, and you may not hear that, but as the instructional leader, I need to share with you the heart of this woman. She cares for me as a building administrator and as a person. And so I just want to let you know that even though we're stressed, we're not giving our children any less. We're giving them as much as we can. We are positive, but we did it to our children because they deserve it. I'm a parent of two high school students. I'm a resident, and I've been an educator at Hackett State for twenty-seven years. And I just could not sit without thanking my staff at Hillwood School for showing me love and graciousness and kindness and bringing me lunch and water and just helping me when I need it most. Hillwood School staff, I love you guys.
Good evening. This is Samantha. My name is Nicole F. I'm the House President. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of the staff members, the teachers, the administrative assistants, the students, paraeducators, and our fabulous administrators for a very successful opening of the school year. As you can imagine, it's been very, very challenging. We are excited to have all of our students back in the building, but it is a struggle, and they have needs that the pandemic has dramatically exacerbated. So I've been here a couple months ago with some members of the administrative team in a couple different buildings, and we spoke specifically about the challenges related to the transfers. The transfers of the supervisor guidance in buildings now, the middle school and the high school, the elementary assistant principals as well, them being shared between the buildings. And recently, we just had two supervisory positions on the agenda that did not go forward. So respectfully, my question tonight is, what is the plan, right? Because we have all of the students back with all of their needs. We have vacancies that haven't been filled, structural vacancies. We have supervisors, acting pastors. We have administrators covering classrooms, not because it is an act of any type of, of, of giving that we don't want to do, but because it's necessary, because kids need it, because there is not a teacher there as Ms. King spoke so eloquently about. So we are filling the gaps in the void, as Ms. Whitey said, but we are tired as well. We're exhausted, and there's only so many hours in the depth. So if we're in a classroom and if Ms. Petrowal and Dr. Soto are stretched so thin, how can they attend to the needs of the parents, the teachers, the students, and the paraeducators? So I really just respectfully implore the board and the superintendent to think about a plan going forward and really reconsider those vacancies and returning those administrators back to their homes. Thank you.
My name is Cynthia Sprecher. I live here at Hackett State as a primary chairman of school, and I teach in our department of school for sixteen years, I can be. And I have to tell you, this has been the worst year so far ever, and the best year. The best year because I was looking so forward to having my students back in the classroom. And it has been. It has been amazing having them back in front of me. I can do everything all to what I was doing before. And I feel like we're going to be able to take steps to fill in the gaps that they have from the last year and a half. But everything else that's going on in the district outside my classroom seems like completely tight. Opening day was so unorganized. Nobody knew what was going on. You had teachers scrambling around to figure out, are we taking screeners? Are we not taking screeners? Are they required on papers? They have to do them all on. We're getting directives from different people, and our principal had to be downstairs in kindergarten for the parents of the kids who had never been here before. And upstairs, we have no idea what to do. It was insane, not to mention they're trying to figure out who's allowed in the building, who's not allowed in the building. We didn't know because we didn't have a directive prior to this. As far as the buses, staff supervision of students after school, we went through this years ago, and they ended up being paid. The powers or the teachers were to stay back. You have special education students that do not sit outside the office and wait for the bus until three thirty or three forty-five. Yet they're still sitting there. Everybody thinks teachers and powers are not doing enough, but all that stuff that the district is not paying for, who has to pick it up? The bus stops here with the teachers and the principals and the vice principals. And those are the things that you guys don't see. It's really frustrating. Subs, you have subs walking around the building that we've never seen before. They don't know where the nurse's office is. They don't know where the office is because there are different subs every day from each company. The best subs we've had are the ones that have been contracted. They know the teachers. They know who's in what grade level, where the kids belong, how to get kids to the art room, where to go and who's an emergency, who the principal is. Half our subs that come in don't even know the principal. But the AHSSD, you'll have to be built for over six hundred thousand dollars. That money should have been much better spent on staffing. That care company, we don't need it if we have the staffing, the child study team, and the counselors that we need. We have one removal partner that hasn't been replaced yet. That parent provided him. That felt connected to, felt comfortable with. Now all those parents, they're not allowed onto that website and talk to a bunch of white people that have nothing, no idea about Hackett State. It's not happening. Resignations, I agree with it. Teachers are burnt out. I get home, I have no patience for my teachers. None. And I gotta get home to release a babysitter, so I have no time in between. We're a languages and dance. You have two sophisticated staff sitting there because they don't want to give teachers an extra prep period. Even though we have new programs and lots of things to prepare, no, let's sit there and watch our kids take game. Let's sit there and watch the, 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 the teachers do. The PG, it's all about adversity. She's telling us how to have them buddy with and pair up. We can't do any of that stuff. But how do we do that if they can't be close to each other? There's a lot more that you guys won't hear. Do that. It's only three minutes.
I'm Officer Hackett High School. So I, I took on responsibility to help and save the chairperson for our union. So I'm speaking on behalf of them primarily. I'm speaking on behalf of the teachers, the children here, right? Generally speaking, I have a few concerns. Many of them already have brought up, so I'm not going to, you know, reiterate what has already been eloquently spoken. But I'm willing to bring in some budget returns. You know, it seems as though a lot of this is making a concern in helping save the youth. A circumstance of prioritizing. I'm not sure what rubric you're using to be able to prioritize the concerns that you have inside of the district, but we have plenty of eyes and ears sitting in the audience and people who have many of our friends. You know, they've been kind of watching what's been going on. Some of the concerns have to do with the construction, the rate of construction, the opening up of funds and projects started and the dates that which are conceded, but also the transparency that we have when those projects are started and when they should be finished. It seems that the timelines are off. Secondly, I've been receiving a number of complaints, concerns, more than complaints about the coordination of traffic in our areas, particularly with respect to students crossing streets. Now that there's been a lot of road construction going on, parents trying to figure out how to drop their kids off the first time. And students crossing the street sounds like a minor thing, but I don't know. I've got my two kids back in an office back over there. If they're crossing the street, I'm holding my breath. They can get across themselves safely. I think we all have had a similar concern. We've heard concerns about eating in classrooms. I've been doing my own documentation of which classrooms end up kind of being organized in top zones. I have images of thermometers from those classrooms in excess of ninety to ninety-five degrees regularly on days when the exterior temperature is less than eighty degrees. That's how much convection ends up occurring in some of these older brick buildings. These are not things that are going to be solved quickly. These are things that need to be addressed over the long term, but it'd be nice if people, such as yourself, were openly having these conversations about how to solve some of these long-term issues. Additionally, I know that we had an investment of over four million dollars in after funds recently. It's just kind of included on the budget. I know that fifteen thousand of that dollars has been spent already, but I'm not quite sure on what. I know that two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is earmarked for projects. I don't know what, what those sums are allocated for, but I think a little transparency with respect to that would be fantastic, and if it's being spent on things to help make our children safer, I think that would be a fantastic, a fantastic bit of information that I think you should feel okay about sharing with us because we are frankly in the dark and the mouth.
There being no public comments, we'll go on to the board agenda. Mr. Powell, at this time, I'd like to both consider approving a minute for the all the students regarding. On the motions, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yeah.
Mr. Oath?
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I did not need, so I will not.
Mr. James Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to move into the resolution. President Allen, that's just in our committee, and I present to the board A one, A eight, two.
Mr. Coleman? On A one, A eight, three, A two, Mr. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Oath?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. James Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good evening, everyone. Policy Committee, best thoughts. We have a bunch of new things for the first read. Just a couple real quick. This is, see what's going on there. P twenty-four, twenty-two, comprehensive health and physical education. Just a couple quick notes on that. Six new statutes were recently codified. A new revision that address issues that must be included in the school district curriculum as required by the media. as required by the New Jersey Youth Learning Standards. Uh, a couple of them are again mandatory. That's going to be, uh, required to be in the curriculum. Sexual youth and self-awareness and prevention education. Just going to read a couple of them. There's a lot of people over here, but just going to read a couple highlights. Uh, curriculum to include instructions on diversity and inclusion, incorporation of age-accompanied instruction related to consent for physical contact with sexual activity. Health curriculum to include instruction on mental health, information about New Jersey's Bay Haven, Community Protection Act, and also infusion of African-American accomplishments into the, uh, school curriculum. So that's part of 24.2. Uh, also be mindful of the here. The, uh, road back is no longer applicable and was the plan to drive the road forward. Uh, the road forward helps to take the guidance to the 21.26 school year. Uh, new policy to collect the guidelines in the road forward. That's the sixteen four years, uh, on one. Um, secondly, supporting, if anyone has any questions, we'll have a long way back there. If you have any questions about the policy, uh, we'll talk. Uh, I put these forward for the board.
That's it.
Right.
Mr. Coleman. On the policy, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman.
Yeah.
Mr. Fane.
Yes.
Mr. O.
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Mr. James Vickery.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell. Motion carries.
President, offer permission to see two, three, four, uh, some detention C11, which includes what education, um, recognition superintendent, who's accepted agreements with three grounds where I see. About fifteen live online sessions, please all students, Jackson Avenue School, senior year, admission statement to empower brand life or encouraging self-acceptance while cultivating social, emotional, intellectual well-being. C12, a lot of the recommendations we've retained approving following positions of coaches for the Lego League. That's Fairmont, John Thompson, Tetra, Lebecio, Jackson Avenue, Verlinda, Rodriguez, Italia, Pejado, and pillars, Austin, Hafler, and there's no De Parker, Torrey, Houston, Manning, standing program, and my kids will be part of that. Guide, so in friendly competition, uh, used to extend learning and exploration, uh, through obviously Lego. And, uh, lastly, drawing your attention to see the theme, I would recommend the superintendent approve memorandum of grace in public schools, Union Patterson University, for high school students in fourth grade, who attended Union Patterson on a shared-time post-secondary annual enrollment bridge program. And I'll lead, uh, headed by, uh, initiated by Nicole Adams. Uh, I'll lead and introduce the paragraphs others in Union Pilots Program, for high school students, when you share time post-secondary dual enrollment bridge program, participating post-secondary association program. Uh, this program offers exposure to both academic college pathways and pre-professional certificate career pathways. Uh, this can be obviously exposure to the college spirit as well as vocational training and exposure to vocational trade. So again, I'll offer C2 through C4.
Mr. Goodman. The curriculum items, C2 through fifteen, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman.
Yeah.
Mr. Fane.
Yes.
Mr. O.
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Mr. James Vickery.
Yeah.
Mr. Powell.
Yeah.
The motion carries.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I was not part of this final budget meeting, however, I, uh, have reviewed the findings and legislation items, uh, with various people on the work at the committee. And I'd like to present, uh, I, uh, C1 through C11, that I'd love to highlight. Uh, items, D1 through D4 are typical, uh, final motions that, uh, that we have every month. Um, I did want to mention the, uh, the D5 is where we are approving an identifying bond issue for the E6 program, the amount of $152,000 to $136,000. Uh, D6 is the item where the payment goes to Johnson and Tito for the same program. Uh, D7, uh, is really, uh, it's actually very interesting to me, um, based upon the fact that, uh, we are approving the purchase of, of phone books. And on the news this morning, when I saw that, uh, the TS79 in Harlem had to close because of, uh, COVID, one of the comments that was made on the news this morning is what are we going to do because we don't have equipment? And I felt like, oh, our kids have phone books and we've been prepared. We were prepared for the last eighteen months and once again, we are prepared. And it just gave me the feeling, I don't, I don't want to be on a soapbox here, but it, it gave me the feeling of pride this morning when a school in, in Harlem, and not everyone has the same stuff like we do, and the city did not prepare for this. So these kids are going to be losing out because they don't have phone books. Uh, so to me, you know, a million dollars for equipment is extremely necessary and we have enough, you know, we have the means to, to provide it. Um, C9 has, the D10 is actually, uh, something I wanted to mention, it's about $7,000 that we have to remove part of the materials from some of the trans. We don't know how long that's been the case, which, uh, obviously no one was in school last year. And, uh, and D, D11 is a very important expenditure, it's $179,000. So we have to replace the steam trap in the lower level of the high school boiler, um, in order to, you know, we're going to be working on the boiler because if you don't replace the steam trap, you're basically not doing, uh, we're going to be spending good money after bad. Very important thought. I present to the board items, uh, the C1 through the R1, it's a considerable.
That's about Mr. Rodriguez. If there's no discussion, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yeah.
Mr. Fane.
Yeah.
Mr. O.
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Mr. James Vickery.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yeah.
The motion carries.
So going round, we have C2 through A8. Um, just a couple of, uh, couple of, I know someone mentioned the $670 for a quarter ago. Um, part of that is security. Um, another, we have, we redid it because it wasn't coming in at the right price. Um, I'll give an explanation in my present comments about, um, that versus staffing. Um, but, but that is there. There's a couple of change orders that, or tank orders, should take a piece of the boilers. The boilers at the high schools tend to be a continuous problem that we are desperately working on to figure out and get fixed. Um, and then the high school elevator had several feet of water in the shaft that we were dealing with. Um, you'll see that, and then the facility that we're talking about, E1 through A8.
That's about Mr. O. On the motions, Mr. Coleman.
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Fane.
Yes.
Mr. O.
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Mr. James Vickery.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
I'm going to go through the computer and go through the school comments.
Good evening, everyone. Um, and just kind of to summarize, we're into a chaotic, uh, discussion that was thrown out this weekend, but I did get to take away for it a week. So, um, it's amazing, and having one come together on the east side of the, of the area of the, of the, be mindful of that. So that's my perspective for those who are supposed to be.
President, I wanted to reiterate what, uh, superintendent stated earlier about, uh, my condolences for the loss of students, COVID-19. Impressed upon everybody that although we're totally looking at, uh, a lot of the tunnels, very much still with us, a lot of hiccups that occurred in opening of the school, a lot of that could be attributed to that.
Mr. Coleman, I mean, that, we shouldn't have not had for, uh, through the COVID.
Okay. Of the longstanding. I thought I saw an early email about that as well.
Yeah, no, longstanding helps later, they show.
A lot of lines I did assume that Charles friends to COVID, uh, over the past, um, so, uh, along with that, a reminder that if you don't have the vaccine, you should go out and get it. Don't be on the street for anyone swollen over and not to have it. You get passed with a lot faster. And I think that whatever issues that we are dealing with regarding opening and administration of the school, keeping our kids, that just can be hopefully, uh, last year if we have to deal with that. I'll reiterate the thanks to the facility staff for their work during the, the hurricanes and protecting our school. I know that, based on Mr. Pemberton's presentation, I know that the shortage of bus drivers, along with a lot of other positions nationwide issues. We will have to work through that and hopefully there'll be a way to be able to help with that as well. And, uh, again, I reiterate, uh, superintendent comments about Hispanic heritage this month. It will be part of our Hispanic heritage and our history and I hope that we can partly celebrate it this month. Uh, did you just, just on, just quickly about, uh, the laxity of the project too?
So, um, I've been here, uh, President Powell, asking to speak a little bit on, on by some of the projects of the late, uh, you know, quite frankly, um, you know, all these projects were bid out in the appropriate timeframe. Um, the future of the Department of Education, the short staff this summer, uh, that being said, um, it took a long time for these projects to receive the proper approval. Um, those approvals did not come until, um, late August, or mid- to late August. And, uh, you know, the timeline, unfortunately, you know, is, is where we're at. You know, we couldn't go these projects away. Uh, this money, these projects were bitted out, they were awarded directly, and the timeline is, is a challenge for all of us. And we understand that, we respect that. Um, it's not a situation we want to be in. That being said, some of the projects, as I mentioned at the last meeting, like the elevator project, I think it takes place over a ten-year period anyway. So, um, again, while, you know, there's a little bit of pain going through these construction projects, some of these projects would not, would not have possibly been able to been completed in a summer period anyhow. But, um, you know, we, we, we do understand the concern. Um, it, we share that, President.
Good evening, everybody. That's, uh, thank you, President Powell. So I'd like to kind of try to answer as everybody's response as, as they came up. I'd like to, uh, thank the conference for the transportation report, challenging report. Um, I'd like to, uh, thank again the event and the, and the Soto staff for that excellent work they've been doing, especially, uh, several items, but, you know, they've worked all summer, you know, really, really working hard to try to get school ready for, for the school. Uh, there was, um, Thomas, who, uh, came up, uh, saying, I'm on the third floor of my school, AC issues, the water fountain issues. When, at the start, I wanted to tell you that all those things are, has, like, I've been up there, I've walked up there and I, and I, one thing that I said, you said, but it's like, was the water fountain not being there and the kids aren't going upstairs? Well, I'm going to address that specifically myself, but seating and air conditioning issues are things that have been approved and in progress and are going to take a long time, but they are on our radar and we are working for the kids, we are.
No, no, Mr. Thomas, I can't have you in the back room. No, Mr. Thomas.
So, um, I thank you for bringing that, that concern to us. Um, you know, those are things that, and we do, you know, we are up here, guys, and we do care and listen. Um, you know, we want to have, it's, it's action. It's tough to just stay up here and, and be attacked every day. And we're not, like, we're trying to work with you, we're here for the kids. So we, we're listening and when, you know, you guys come up and address your concerns, we, we go back and we discuss it. So it doesn't matter. So we do appreciate you coming here and, um, voicing your concern. It's, it's a little difficult just being attacked. So a lot of times I'm safe as opposed to being that, that, that negative. That, that culture has a pain. Uh, we, like, I'm just saying, we, we should be doing better than them all. That means everybody, that's the board, everybody. So, um, we're all working together, that's why we're here. You know, we have kids, there are, I, I know you people. You know, so let's, let's talk, let, let's talk, uh, let's work together. Um, you know, a lot of issues were addressed as far as, you know, staff and, you know, new HR positions. And all I'm going to say is, and I want to criticize this, accountability is going to be moving forward, the moving point thing for everybody. So that's going to address a lot of the issues we've got some concerns with like that. So, um, accountability is something that, you know, we've all been striving for, are working towards. And, um, just, you know, doing the best we can for our kids. I know COVID is still very clear. So things are being adjusted and, you know, we, we do pray we feel flexibility and we all have to be flexible. You know, things change at, at, at the last minute because there are constant changes. And that's, that's the kind of world we live in right now, unfortunately. So, you know, uh, I do, I do appreciate you guys being flexible and having to deal with doing more. Uh, you know, everybody is, like, you know, there are shortages everywhere. So, um, you know, let's just keep the dialogue open. Uh, that's, that's, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, if I may just, uh, you know, piggybacking, it comes to driving water fountains. But I can tell you that the district has gone to Johnson and Tito Bottled filling station and we're about ninety percent completed throughout the entire district. You know, we will be a hundred percent complete before the end of the school year. I will also say, though, that is something that we should all be proud of because that's not a requirement. Nobody's obligated to change all of the water fountains to bottled filling stations. Our district has gone above and beyond to do that. So I just want to put that out there. It's not that we're sitting and we're failing at something. There are many districts that have not replaced all of their water fountains and we will be a hundred percent, um, completed with that project before the end of the school year.
Yeah, be pretty supportive for all of them, or is already.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're having a nice evening. Um, first, uh, shout out to Mr. Pemberton for these, uh, sanitation issues. So you see, Adam, awesome job, I have to thank, uh, somebody, uh, yeah, it's not working. That night was chaos, I was in the DMV, I was here with Adam, we were back in the middle of the night when the alarms were going off and there was water all over the floor. It was a chaotic night and these guys diverted every bit of alcohol they could get. Uh, shout out to Adrian with the, uh, rain team, the same old school recognition, that's a, that's a, that's a big deal. That's a big deal, we just can't, we can't take them for granted or stuff like that. Um, I got a lot of notes here from, from everybody's head. I'm not going to hit everybody that did comment. Let me try to be nice. First day of school was chaos. That's, that's, that's embarrassing. Absolute chaos, failure on every level. There was a failure at every level. It was embarrassing. It was embarrassing to be a parent dropping my kids off. It was an embarrassment to drive around the middle school eighteen times to figure out how these kids didn't get in the building. It was an embarrassment to see weeds, who was this cold? I think he said weeds, right? You can't have weeds in your garden, because that's what will die. Yeah. But check out the weeds around the buildings in the district. You might, you might want to see some weeds there because these schools don't even look open. I'm sorry if we didn't go out of our way to, like, we, we got in the way of the summer vacation to let kids come back to the school, but the schools did not even look open. It's embarrassing. There's weeds everywhere, the mulch is not fresh. This is opening day. My mother-in-law told my wife when we got married, if you're not free on your wedding day, you're never going to be free. It's opening day. These kids are coming back to school after a year and a half of chaos. And if we didn't have to go out of our way, one iota, not one helping hand, it was a disgrace, a disgrace. Now, disgrace on us too. Now, disgrace on us too, because we are working together, we are in it together. I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for every fiber of my being, I am embarrassed. And I think, if you really search deep down, there's probably a little embarrassment in everybody in it. Because that should not go down like that, we knew that day was coming. My birthday is September seventh, I was one of those kids that hated my birthday because the first day of school was coming, my first day of school was always my birthday, and I hate it. Right? So, I know that day's coming, I know it's happening, it's not like a, like a trick or something, or some kind of a magic trick, oh, it wasn't, no. First day of school, coming, it's, it's happening. Complete unpreparedness, unpreparedness on every level. I, I, I don't get it, like, literally, I drove around the building, middle school eighteen times. And I'm like, are we kidding here, are we joking? But, the next day, we, I think it was a Thursday then, we tore a couple of buildings, the second day we tore down a bunch of buildings to see how things were getting them. We say we, it's all about we, 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 we went as together, it's not about we, I think it's directed to you, it's about them. It's about them, so, it's about the five thousand three hundred and twenty kids. And everything about them is a byproduct about adult agendas in terms of contracts, now, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wish you. But if everything is a byproduct of what we give them, what the hell are we doing here? This is embarrassing, the whole thing is embarrassing, I'm sorry. With that being said, there were a lot of positive, there were a lot of positives. We got to tore the buildings, and just when I thought all hope was lost, we went through another day's progress. And the third floor there, yeah, Mr. Jackson, yeah, Mr. West, yeah, a bunch of teachers, and Mr. Jackson is a great teacher. These kids were gone, and like, there's, 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 there's so many positives here, I, again, rose-colored glasses. I don't wanna be too optimistic, I am the optimistic guy, I guess, you wanna say? There's so much here to fight for, there's so much potential, if we could just maybe get out of each other's way. And, and do what's right for them, we might be a lot better off. With that being said, I mean, like, a lot of things we don't know about, like, with, 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 uh, Mr. Thomas, with the air conditioning upstairs. Tell your building administrator, tell the principal, like, say, like, essentially, the way it's all about doing is the quick way, like, hey, we need to air condition that window, we're gonna get one right now. Home people, right, tell the building principal, tell somebody, tell somebody that can just fix it, like, we need, like, we, we can't wait to hear anything happen right here, it needs to go through the proper change command. It does?
Guys, alright, let's not do it about that.
So, I had a lot of comment, I, I took notes on everybody's comments, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna dig into this, I just don't wanna give you lip service, right? There's action, knowledge, they minus say for zero, knowledge minus action for zero, anything else is negative, I could say, yeah, we heard you, we're gonna do it. We're, we're looking for all this stuff. But, also, Mr. Mr. Vavon, Vavon, I think I'm saying it right, down, if you went from the middle street to high school, and there's all the flood damage at the old mechanic shop, this guy's doing amazing things down there. Yeah, amazing things, there's so much good happening here. It's like, we can't give up hope. You don't trust us, we don't trust you, whatever, whatever, hidden agendas, agenda and contract, all that stuff. It's about them, it's about them. And, let's not put a period where it's gone off for time, like, we have to keep this going, this isn't the end, we gotta keep moving forward, it has to bring it together. Because this district has been stagnant too long. And it's, like you said, and it's gonna get worse, these buildings are coming up, they're popping up everywhere. We gotta, we gotta figure this thing out, we have to figure this out for them, that's our job, that's why we're here. Protect the agents and go family.
Uh, Mr. Trustee, uh, you are a tough.
No, 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 no.
But, uh, my comments, my comments are, are actually wanting to be, uh, very brief, because I, I do support all the comments that this trustee's performance has made. I, uh, I, I would like to, uh, very quickly thank, uh, uh, entire facility staff, first, first, Peter and Adam, for saving, uh. What could have been a disaster, particularly. Um, I, I'd like to thank, uh, Tyler Tannen from CAFPowers. I think that this is a very important program, and especially if it's accessible to everyone. Parents, staff, students, trustees, all of us. Uh, all of us are in a state that we've been in for the last eighteen months like never before. Uh, and, and everyone who has gone through some degree of PTSD. But especially them, the, the five hundred three, five thousand three hundred and twenty students. I would like to also say that I missed the fact that we didn't have a student, student board member report tonight, that's always one of the highlights of every meeting.
They're appointed to be up for the meeting.
Okay, so. Um, but just to keep it brief, uh, everyone makes, uh, especially in public, makes some very important comments. It's not going without, so, uh, please, stay safe. Follow all the protocols, just, uh, with self-awareance, it's very nasty. Uh, you know people that, uh, that haven't gotten their vaccines yet, try to persuade them, that's not a bad thing. Uh, before, uh, standing close to the heart of it, and have a very good night, thank you all for representing yourselves so well in the, uh, in the public sphere.
Good evening, um, first, let me say thank you for, um, accommodating my need, I appreciate that, it is, was not meant to be disrespectful to anyone, I, I needed it to stop, so. Cause this literally picks up what's happening, and I cannot give her, so appreciate being educated and accommodating my need. Um. I feel like, in this meeting, that we are not even in the same, on the same planet. And it doesn't make sense to me. And I don't know if it is our misunderstanding of our function, or your misunderstanding of your function, or our misunderstanding of each other's function. But I wanna clear up some things, so that everyone is on the same page. Visiting schools. I hear you, I would love to be, look, I, I work from home at this point. I'll be glad to come to your school every day of the week. But we have guidelines, state guidelines that we have to follow, we can't just walk in your building, I said as a parent. But I cannot just walk into your building, I have to be escorted, in general, by Mr. Sanchez, and guess what? He's got a lot of capacity. So it's not, it's not that we don't want to be there, it is that we cannot be there. Now, do we take the time, we, we took there, more than half a morning, going to three schools, we have another one, we're working to schedule another one so that we could go to the rest of the school. But we cannot be in the building without an escort and for a very specific purpose. The six hundred ninety-four thousand dollar order goes. We cannot spend that money on staffing if you're leaving. Everything has certain specific costs of money, we cannot take money that was designated, that's designated for one thing, but it has to go for building improvement. We cannot put that towards staffing salaries and retirement, all those things, there are very specific guidelines for the state of New Jersey and federal law that tell us how we have to spend the money. It's not that we don't want to add staffing here, it's, it's that we are bound by state staff. I heard someone say, a successful start of the school year, I almost, like my mama would say, pick your face. Um, because. I, I'm not gonna go too deep, because Mike covered it, or Mr. Oakes covered it, um, it was absolutely disgusting. And let me be clear on whose fault that is. It is not simply the board. Every building has been been a straighter. And that administrator is your advocate to this man, the staff and the board. So if something is not happening, and, and you can't figure out that something's happening at, at the school level. Like the transportation form, whatever, that means that your building administrator needs to be frantically making calls to Mr. Sanchez to figure out what has to happen.
Guys, we cannot, uh, back and forth. We cannot, uh, back and forth, guys, that's.
Well, what I'm, I'm not blaming administrators, what I'm trying to tell me.
Guys, we, we don't do back and forth, let, let's let him finish, you understand?
What I'm trying to tell you though, is that it's for your administrator to figure out with this initiative, until they have to figure it out. Whatever they have to do to figure it out, the building administrators are your advocate to the, to the, I mean, they are ultimately responsible for every human in that building, every blade of grass, everything. That is the truth, whether, whether we like to acknowledge it or not, that is the absolute truth. I want to see your admin, administrators advocating for what the needs of the building are. But I'm telling you that the opening day was embarrassing for this school district. If the cars were not at the, at certain schools, teachers' cars, it looked like an abandoned building. We have, I mean, we have to fix this stuff. The ethnicity stuff, it, it's like that we're not coming to the same meeting, we have bonded for fifteen million, sixteen million dollars to, to get that, that is. We are working our very best to get it as quickly as we possibly can, but it is something that. This group of folks, just, I mean, this is going back for years and years and years. And we absolutely want you, specifically your students, to be cool and needed, and all of that. And, and I would love for every teacher to have control of that in their own room, and that's the dream, and the goal, and we're working towards that, it is in, the money has been bonded for, it's, it's a matter of, now, COVID, yes, COVID is an issue. Everything is delayed, we can't get permits from lots of DOE to the city, whatever it is. But it's all in process. I will say, when we did go in the building, we, we were in, um, Ms. Whittaker's building. There was some fantastic teaching going on. Uh, look, I know, there are people that will come and push, but I'll tell you, Mr. Jackson is one heck of a teacher. He had those kids, what, whatever he was talking about, they were stuffy, and that every, every word that he was saying. So I know that there, there are great things happening, I know that you love our children, I know that, I believe that with every fiber of my being. But I can tell you this, when teachers walk out on the first day of school and don't even address the children, they just come out and start talking to the parents about the transportation form. It's so discouraging. It, it's so discouraging to, to not have the excitement visible to our children. And that is coming from not just me personally, I cannot tell you how many emails and calls I got about how lackluster the first day of school was for our kids.
That was what I was gonna do, I didn't have to do that.
You guys, no back and forth, that's very true, Steve. Yes, thank you.
So we want nothing more, let me just say this, we want nothing more than our kids' success, or. Which, if our kids are successful, that means that, that y'all are successful, and doing your job, we want you to be successful. We wanna provide all the tools that it takes for you to be successful. But we have to have some, I mean, there has to be some range of accountability for all of us, if we're not doing what we're supposed to, you, you're, you're here. And we appreciate that, that's, that's, that's the way the system works. But everybody, I don't remember who said the weed comment, but that was, that was the most appropriate comment.
We do, we cannot do the back and forth, guys.
Well, that's what we must to fix, right? Thank you, that's what we must to fix, is we must to figure out how it is a win, and that's everybody participating in this. In a way that, that's work, and that, you know, that's not blaming board members for not walking in the building.
Guys, listen.
I wasn't talking, I wasn't walking up there, I was talking out here.
Yes.
Now, I would just want to remind you to be, um, as both, all members of the public, um, to not interrupt the integration of meetings, and in accordance with the open public meetings that are publicly given, not pending receipt at my point of entry minutes, being one of them. Um, we're asking you to fully respect your body and not withdraw from meeting, to get comments and output from the public.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. First, I wanna thank you all for coming to our meeting tonight. We appreciate you coming out and sharing your comments. And listen to us, we are listening to you. But we really do appreciate you coming and taking your time out, okay, so just wanna make that clear. Uh, the tennis court, we had our ribbon cut in, and, uh, the kids are really enjoying our brand new tennis court. These are state-of-the-art tennis courts, and we invested in these tennis courts, and they're first-rate tennis courts, and our kids are really enjoying it, so. You know, when you have time to drive by and take a look at it, the banners on the fence, our custodians did an awesome job, so I just, you know, wanna thank them again for the job they did, they cleaned up, they cut the shrubs. That was on September thirteenth, the Saturday before their tournament, I don't know how many people are attending, I, I did, spent, spent the top of my day, back and forth, I can't even sleep, it's late, it's nice to come out and support them, they need us, stay tomorrow. And. The parents of all the district were in awe of our tennis court. And that, that means, that meant a lot to me, that they were saying, oh my God, we wish they had these, you know, a day, and that's important to us, that. We, we really put a lot of time and investment in our facilities and our kids, okay, they, they deserve it. Ida Kane, it was a nightmare. Okay, and, uh, our custodians did an awesome job of cleaning up, or both of you got damaged. Wanna thank our athletic director and everyone involved in the fences for the quick turnaround and getting our field fixed, so our kids had their shirt, or their own, their home game on Friday night. I just wanna thank you guys, that was a quick turnaround, there was a lot of damage, and their first game was that over, over bet, but it was, it's fixed, and, uh, I'm very happy that you guys, you guys got it fixed, so, thank you. And, uh, something I think should be up there, and everyone's, uh. Uh, Pemberton, you over here, transportation, it's a problem. Some districts are using international law. It's everywhere, it has everywhere, hopefully, we can all get through this together, okay, so, thank you for this here solid presentation, condolences to the family. Of our student class, and it's a young one, very young one, my dear friend, and my heart aches. From his family, but keep them in our files, please. With all that's going on, and that's a pile on, it's just rough, and I'm still there. Uh. I heard someone mention, is a shortage of blood paint, shortage of teachers, I listen, I will, we will speak to the administration, if there's a shortage, it should be addressed. Okay, we need. We need our schools to be equipped with that, so it can be the benefit of kids. We won't be a stress on our, uh, our staff and stuff. But we need to find out if there is, where it is, and we will fix it if there is. I, I can promise you that. Okay? So, thank you for being here for our attention. Thank you for telling us about the temperature on the third floor, like Mr. O said. We don't know these things. They're board members. We don't know. So, you bring it to our attention. Or, like Mr. Rodriguez said, you bring it to your, at Bellisville School. There will, there's a chain of commanders, also maybe the BA, the Santa's. And if there's a damage problem, we will make sure it is fixed. These buildings have been around a long time, and these buildings were not repaired, as we all know, for many, many, many years. I've been living here fifteen years, and my son went two, and now we, we're working on them, or we're fixing them. But guess what? Room one thirty-one, it takes time. It takes time. Some of us ask you to be patient in life. Like it's a water cooler, we get to there, just work the part, but we get to there. But thank you. You're the eyes, you're the ears, you bring it to the powers that be, but you're bringing it to us here publicly, and we'll speak to them and check it. And I guarantee, we will work diligently to get these things fixed. We should not go with our certified teachers, though they can fail. I'm not saying it's true, but if it is true, we will get it addressed. So, once again, thank you. And we're working on getting our loan states in. We have, you know, we're really working hard on it. But staffing is a problem everywhere in the United States. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, even at the hospitals. I'm not sure what's going on. Post-COVID, there's a major shortage globally. A lot of people, it's hard getting people back to work. Some people are just, they're going back out. And so, let's just work together. We have board members. We have lives, we have jobs, and we don't know everything. If I sit there and tell you I know nothing, I'm like, we depend on you to come here and sell us things. But first, before you come to us, go to eat at Propetron, and then they'll try to fix it. So, I'm not saying you can't let us know, but just go to the Propetron, there's no way of stopping, you know? Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, she's here. Yeah? Uh, you mentioned diversity, inclusionary, hiring practices. We're very, we are very big on it. Once again, it takes, it takes time to fix all these problems. If I sit there and tell you I'm gonna fix everything tomorrow, I would not be realistic. And you know it, 'cause you've been here longer than I have been. Maybe you, we teach longer than live here. You know the disciplinary schools, you know the staffing, you know the schools better than I do. Work with us. We'll get stuff. But you know what? It's been closing. We keep hitting on, this is not done, this is not done. But I'm gonna say to this board, I am proud of this board. Look at all the things we've achieved. Let me just find out a couple. Look at the middle school. You remember that field? When it rained, and the kids run in the building, look at that field today. Let's talk about some positives. Look at the tennis court. Look at the new school bathrooms. Look at the LED lighting. Look at the boiler. We're fixing the room. There's so many things we have done that was never done. Don't look at the boys locker room down there. Go look at, we're working hard. Look at the high school football field, look at the scoreboard. Look at that board, some new scoring boards. These kids are getting top-rate facilities. I went to Hitler's, which Whitey told me. Some people say we don't visit the schools. Maybe your tires need a new school. We go to your school. Maybe your teacher will come to your school. Opening day, I was at Mellicay Parker. Mr. Whittaker gave a test for that. I was at a middle school. I leave work over the twelve and a half hours there, and I dedicate myself to go to schools before sleeping. Just to say hello to the parents. Welcome back. I'm not here to interfere in your schooling. That's not our thing. But just to go up to the parents and say, thank you, and welcome back, it meant a lot to them. And that's what I do when I come out to the school. I'm not here to watch anyone, because I know how difficult it is, and the stress, the anxiety, and just here to support you. Talk to the parents and tell them that you're doing the best you can. That's why I come. But I saw many things. But I'm not gonna lambaste anyone tonight. I will say this. A chain is as strong as a weak chain. It takes a village to raise a child. Let's think about that. Let's do it together. Could hopefully this day be a little bit stronger? Yes, it could have been better. I'm not gonna blame anyone. I, I, I would have liked to see you balloon. It would have been nice. I would have liked to see you come up to the chair and the kids, welcome back. Or they were assigned, go here, move there, but you know what? Let's move forward. What is done cannot be undone. It's all you've got, it's still there. Let's move forward, and let's do better the next time, together. And we'll get it done for these kids. We're not perfect. You're not. We're not. But let's do it together, Steve. I'm not gonna be on this board forever, but I'll tell you this. We have accomplished a lot, and I'm happy when I look back, and when I, even if I move away from it and I come back, I could say we did this, we did that, for the kids that are in there. Let's just do it together. Happy second degree city motion. A lot of buildings are going up. We're gonna need a new school. And that's gonna ease the heat. If I suggest there were business schools more, I'm crazy. You know expensive schools are. But we have to do it together, get the taxpayers involved. But the buildings are here, the kids are coming, and we need a cutlet school, a blue-ribbon school for a kid. But work with us, and we work for the city, and we get a space, and we'll give you a beautiful future. COVID is real. COVID is around. Be safe. Pray for each other. This is not the time to tear down each other. This is the time to build up each other. Let's stand together. Many people have enough loved ones. It's not the time to fight. It's not you against us, and us against you. Let's get rid of that mentality. If you, if you have a solution, bring it to us. We can maybe save you, maybe save two. But I, we have to, to us of tonight, let's just pledge to ourselves, please, stop fighting each other. Who gets hurt? Like Mr. O said, the kids. The kids get hurt in the process. I want us, us of tonight, to work together. Then that better. Let's work together. If you have something to say, just convince them nicely, and we'll do the same. And we'll get it done. Our kids will benefit. Okay, guys? So, but we really appreciate you coming out. And like I said, be safe, wear your mask, get your vaccinations, get your vaccination. Vaccination works. I'm a testament to it. Okay, guys? Get on stage. Thank you for coming, and you have a good night, Jerry and Earth.
Do you have a second? Want paper?
Hi.